My camera's on, I'm sorry. I'll shut it off and turn it back on.
There you go. I had to do the same thing.
Okay, back on.
Now I lost you.
No, he's back.
All right.
Now I saw Jeff and I don't see him now, so what the hell.
Uh oh.
We're gonna get started. The first piece of legislation is the dog, which was ordinance number 10, which is Vinnie's with Jessica's the second. We've only received one email about it. Mr. Mark will be reading that tonight. I don't know if it's public comments or...
Yeah, it wasn't received by clerk, so it was just public comment.
Yeah. And so I have not heard, I don't know if anybody has any issues with us moving forward and doing third and adoption tonight?
I'm good.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Then we'll go forward and we'll do that. The next one up is 14, which is the HR payroll specialist. Dave will be that person. Who wants to tell us what the changes are?
I don't know if it nets on, but it's pretty, it's pretty simple. Instead of administrator, I think it's adding specialist, but the main, the main thing really is the ordinance had stated that it was an exempt position rather than non-exempt, I believe is the only change really.
Okay. Everyone understand exempt versus non-exempt? If not, Mark, give a real quick.
So exempt, you're generally hourly employee. Non-exempt employee means you can work additional hours and I would certain FLSA provisions.
So exempt. I was always exempt, so I could work 24/7 and I got paid for it. Any questions on that one or concerns, or are we okay to do 1-2-3, guys and gals?
I'm good with 1-2-3.
Yeah, it sounds like we need to get that fixed ASAP, so let's do 1-2-3 on that.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
You'll be the person for this one. I'm your second. I'm assuming, did everybody get my email?
Yes.
Yep, I got it.
I thought I'd do that again, it just makes it go faster. Okay, then we'll go 1-2-3 in adoption. Next one up then is amending this is snowboat, no, snowmobiles and off-highway motorcycles and all-purpose vehicles. That's not driving your regular car. This is all those other vehicles. So Jeff is the lead on this one with Vinnie as the second. Mark, did you want to explain this one?
Sure, so this is an existing ordinance that the city had added a number of years ago. The only suggested revision comes after communicating with the police department, and this is to clarify that the permit, or rather to add that the permit period is only for one year. So it's not indefinite, it's limited to a one-year period, and there would have to be a reapplication by individuals after that time.
So the one year is good for the permit. If you have a violation, you cannot get another one for a year from the date of the violation.
Right, correct.
Any other questions?
Is this just cleanup, or was there a reason we went back and had to look at this?
I think it's to clarify, because there was some question over, you know, exactly how long the permit was out for. So this basically clarifies the original intent when the ordinance was passed.
Okay. I was just curious, because there was a reason we have the, the dog ordinance, right?
Right.
Well, the dog ordinance is a clarification too, because the ordinance has been there. It's been sort of more language around it. Some county already has pretty good language around it, so if someone really wanted to wish they could go to the county. So with this one, any other questions? And if not, we do 1-2-3 and adopt. I don't hear anything.
Yeah, that's up to council. There's not really a rush for it, so it's up to you guys.
Is it that so?
We could do like we did with the other legislation that has resident impact. Do the first, give them time to put any information out to us or any questions. So everyone okay with that? We could do it first.
Yeah, I'm totally I'm totally fine with that. Give people time to give us feedback.
Okay, Jeff, you're the lead on this one. We won't need a second since we're only going on first reading.
Okay.
Then they come to 16, which I'm sure everyone read all the pages. I'm the lead on this with Dave as the second. This is the patrolman and the
Sergeants.
Yeah, I'm totally blanked out there. Mark, did you want to talk about this or Chief, whichever?
Or the mayor?
So basically, it mirrors the, the contract that we did with the police department. It's the same raise, it's 2% over three years, and it also has an increase in the insurance contribution from the employees. Other than that, there's just some language cleanup throughout.
And they've already accepted it?
Yeah, this is the ratify the contract. This is the final step.
Okay. Questions? Anyone? Chief, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Recommendation, Mark, 1-2-3 and adopt.
No reason to delay, yep.
Already done now. Their part. Do I hear any questions or concerns about doing 1-2-3?
Not for me.
Okay, then we'll move along to the last one, which is 17. This is if you saw the latest drawing, which included a little more part of the park. Jessica, this one is yours. I'm your second. This is to repave the parking lot, which we all know is way overdue. Jason, do you want to speak to this?
Ms. Tully, I can talk about it for a moment if you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is to, to conduct a public bid to repave the parking lot in the area shown on the latest map, which I think council has received. To your point, Ms. Tully, it's certainly long overdue, so we're happy to finally be able to do this project. In addition to paving the area shown in red on the map, we will also be asking bidders for alternate pricing to build some additional handicap parking spaces. That's in the area shown in blue on your map. Alternate pricing, as many of you probably know, is separate pricing, which we as a city can choose whether or not to accept, or whether or not to perform the work at a later time. And we'll be coordinating or syncing the schedule of paving the parking lot in May with a planned facility closure of the rec center. And we would ask for a 1-2-3 as well, please.
Jason, do you have anything you want to add? Since it's your parking lot.
Thank you. I'll add in, Director Gelati did a great job of explaining. He and I have been in cooperation for a couple of weeks now with the planning process. We will utilize our normal August annual closure and move it to May, handle many of the maintenance projects. We have a ever-growing list of maintenance projects that need done, so this will be an ample opportunity for us to take advantage of that and provide safety by not having people trying to walk in and out of a construction zone while participating in recreation programs. We will look to move some of our fitness opportunities outside to the park, because that is one of the things we learned last summer was very advantageous to our community. So that is how we will kind of offset a little bit of what's going on fitness wise. Other than that, though, we've communicated on dates and we feel good with the project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Joe, what's the estimated cost that you're putting out there?
I haven't determined exactly that yet, but approximately $300,000.
Is that, that's without the extra handicap spaces?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Jeff? Benny?
No, I'm good. I'm sorry, I'm good.
Nope, looks good.
Okay, if there's no concerns or we'll go ahead and do 1-2-3 in adoption, so we can, well, we're going out for bid. So that doesn't mean it's going to start until we get the bids back, and we have to approve the bids based on the cost of this and the revenue, so this is the first step, and that's why
Actually, you have one more question. This was, is this coming out of the roads budget? John? Or Joe? Is this coming out of the road budget, or Parks and Rec, or split?
Capital Improvement Budget.
Okay. So, so okay.
But which department? That, that's capital improvement. Every department has a budget. So is it Parks and Rec, or is it Roads?
No, it's the Capital Improvement Fund. It's the city's portion of the Capital Improvement Fund.
But in the Capital Improvement Fund, we go by departments.
And the city is also, the city is also a department, so it's, it's the city's portion of the Capital Improvement Fund.
It makes sense.
Public, public lands and buildings, Jan. It's public lands and building.
So the same fund that would have paved the, the city hall parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah. Somebody's dog agrees, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Again, second and third.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. There are no other motions occurred except, Jessica, you have the one for the Memorial Park Foundation?
Yeah, do you need me to expound on it, or, or anything, like read the list, or?
Well, one of us, what you can on it, but you're going to take the motion with Jeff as the second.
Sure. Mayor, do you want to talk about what the items are, or should we just accept it and move on?
Sure, it's basically all the things that they've added to the park. We're just taking acceptance of that, so we can add that to our insurance and and have those things on the, on the books for us, accepting them into our land.
I mean, do we want to enumerate them, or just explain when we, when we carry the motion?
I mean, it's up to you guys what you want to do, but essentially, it's, you know, the monuments that we have there and those types of things, so if you want to go into more detail, I mean, I think saying the monuments that are there and all the structures you see would suffice, but if you want to go into more detail, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, the, the list wasn't that exciting. I mean, it's all the stuff that we see there in the park, so, okay.
And, and to Jessica's point, I think it would be valuable to give a little more detail so that the residents know, you know, all the work that was done, that's now being placed in the park, or already placed come under our ownership, but they were produced by the, the foundation. And I think that people drive by there and they really don't know. So I think that's a good point, Jessica. And of course, that's a 1-2-3, because we're accepting, we don't have any other action to take on that. And then the adjournment again is Mr. Finley with Mr. Ventura as the second. Anything else?
I'll share my screen real quick, Dan, and show you where the $300,000 is budgeted for. Right here, Family Rec Center and Capital Improvement Fund. And you'll see down below, there's a line for department capital. So it's, it's just a citywide public lands and building budget item. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay.
Make it larger.
Who had resolution 17? I didn't catch that. Did you say it?
It's me. It's Jessica.
And who had the second, please?
Jan.
Me.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm doing the minutes as normal with Jeff as the second this time, so anything else? If not, you can, you can have some restroom time. But you got to make sure you come back at 7:29, so we know your faces are here. Okay. See you in a bit.
All right, so everybody here and ready? 7:30? Let's see, Jessica, Mr. Finley.
Everyone's here.
All right, hello and welcome to the March 11th council meeting. It is 7:30 PM. Well, Mr. Goodetti, please call the roll.
Ms. Brand?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Thank you, and now we will do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of Thursday, February 25th, 2021, regular council meeting?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the minutes as received by the law department for the February 25th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, next up is public comments. Mr. Goodetti, do you have any public comments this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, we do have one. This is from Alexis C. I won't attempt to pronounce her last name. Alexis says, "I'm a resident that resides on Roseland Drive. Recently, I've noticed there's an alarming amount of dog waste along the roads and culverts. While some may argue this is from a dog going on their own yard, or it's because the snow has melted, I believe that is not the case. Furthermore, that's not a valid reason, since the area along the road would be in the right of way. I'm aware of the Dog-at-Large Ordinance. Is it possible for that ordinance to be amended to include verbiage regarding this issue of dog waste? It's quite a nuisance to continue to see this daily and nothing being done about it. Furthermore, the section of the city that I reside in has no sidewalks, so it's quite prominent all over."
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, do we have any correspondence?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move right into pending or new legislation with ordinance number 10.
I move to offer ordinance 10, 2021, for its third reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance amending Chapter 505 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Macedonia relative to animals in foul.
Chief Golden, you want to elaborate on this briefly, please?
I don't have much of a comment on it.
Well, it kind of originated from your department, so I figured to have you give a little explanation.
Can, can you read the ordinance again?
It's, this is the dog waste ordinance, Chief?
Oh, yeah, we don't have that many issues with it. You know, we had one main issue, I think, is what this was really about, so I heard the complaint that we had from the resident just read. It, it's a difficult thing to enforce, but we'll do what we can.
And Mayor, I'll, I would just add that the city does have a general nuisance ordinance already on the books. The intent of this was to create something specific. As Ms. Tully mentioned, the county does already have a very simple dog waste ordinance on the books already. This one's just more specific. Gives our local police department a little more enforcement ability.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance 10, 2021, according to law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
No.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
You're muted, Jan.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance number 10 carries. Ordinance number 14.
I move to offer ordinance number 14, 2021, for its first, second, and third readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 31, 2020, relative to the position of human resource slash payroll specialist within the Human Resources Department.
Mr. Goodetti?
Sure, so this basically makes two changes. One is to change, or rather, correct the position title reference in that ordinance passed in 2020 from administrator to specialist. And the other change is to similarly reflect the position being non-exempt rather than exempt.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number 14, 2021, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance number 14 carries. Ordinance number 15.
I believe that's Mr. Garvis.
You're muted, Mr. Garvis.
Sorry. I would move to offer ordinance 15, 2021, for its first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending Section 375.03 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Macedonia relative to the operation of snowmobiles, off-highway motorcycles, and all-purpose vehicles.
Mr. Goodetti? Brief explanation, please?
Sure, so this proposed ordinance stems from some discussion with the police department, and the intent is to clarify that the length of the permit is for a one-year period, and to also clarify that an individual cannot apply for a permit if they have violated that, this ordinance for a period of time going back one year.
Thank you. Ordinance number 16.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 16, 2021, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance ratifying the collective bargaining agreements for police sergeants and patrolmen for the years 2020, 2021, and 2022, with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association.
So essentially, this piece of legislation is wrapping up the negotiations with the OPVA, which included the sergeants and the patrolmen for the police department. In my role as mayor, I've spent a lot of time negotiating since I've been in office, because I walked into contracts that had been open I think for about three years. We wrapped those up and then walked into them again, and the pandemic delayed it. Thankfully, as things improved with the pandemic and the finances of the city were in a manner that we could move forward with what we have now, and I'm happy to say that hopefully council will wrap this up this evening, and we could move forward for three years without having to go into negotiations again, so I would appreciate moving that forward. Any further discussion? And what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that we pass and post according to law ordinance number 16, 2021, please.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance number 16 carries. Resolution number 17.
I'd like to offer resolution 17, 2021, for its first, second, and third readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution authorizing the city engineer to prepare plans, bids, and specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids to repave the City of Macedonia Family Recreation Center parking lot.
Well, I will turn this to Mr. Gelati here in a moment, but just to state that, that, that parking lots needed attention for quite some time. I'm happy to say that we can finally fund that and get that taken care of, and I'm hoping that this one passes as well, because I don't think there's any person here that does not recognize that that parking lot's in the need of some attention. So, Mr. Gelati, take it away, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I agree with you there. This is for the long-awaited repaving of the rec center parking lot, with the potential for the creation of some new additional handicap parking spaces, and the work will be scheduled for this May.
And I'll also add, there's been a lot of folks that have contacted me about additional handicap spaces. The original design of the parking lot is not conducive for handicap. We really only have four or five that are really close to the door. So when we were looking at repaving the lot, I had spoke with Mr. Gelati and Mr. Jason Chaddick, and we were talking about increasing the spaces, and we believe we may have the ability to do that, so we're going to have that as an alternate bid on this so that we can increase those spaces and have them closer to the building, which I think will be a benefit to a lot of the folks that utilize the facility, so that's why that's on there. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I move that we pass resolution 17, 2021, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Resolution 17 passes. Thank you, council, for that. Very much appreciated. Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the donations of the items identified in the March 8th, 2020 correspondence from the Nerdonia Hills Veteran Memorial Park Foundation to Mayor Molnar concerning items placed in the park by the foundation.
Second.
This is just a, a kind of housekeeping thing every year, as the Veterans Memorial Park Foundation adds items to the park. They turn over the items to the city, so that the items can be insured by the city and whatever maintenance agreement we have with them, so this is just accepting the list presented by the foundation that was sent out to the mayor this week.
And just to be clear, that list includes the Blue Star, the Pavilion, the Conflict Memorial, the benches, the tables, the inscribed pavers, the sprinkler system, and the Kildan Action Field. So all those are the things we are looking to accept with this motion. And we had a second, I think?
Yes, we did, sir.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, so any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, we'll move into the mayor's report. Tonight, I want to recognize the Civil Service Commission members. For those of you that don't know, the Civil Service Commission provides rules for all appointments, promotions, demotions, suspensions, discharges, and appeals with respect to those positions and employees in the classified service, provided such rules and regulations are not inconsistent with applicable charter and ordinance provisions. The police and firefighters are also in that classified service. I want to recognize the folks that serve on that committee, which would be the chairman, Mr. Michael Hawkins, Nate Falkenstein, Dave Hetrick, Melissa Hunter, and John Pokalitsky. So thank you all for your service in that. They do do a lot of work. When we are hiring police officers and firefighters, I could tell you, they have a pretty strenuous process that takes a lot of time, and then they give a lot of their time in order to do that, so I want to thank them today for that. Second thing I want to touch on tonight is the recognition of our small businesses, i.e. the restaurants. We started our weekly recognition of them. So far, we have recognized the Zuki Sushi Restaurant, the Dolphin, and this week will be Reiner Kurz Bakery. So we're going to kind of go through all of them, and I want to thank them for being in our community and for folks patronizing them. Next up will be Raising Canes. If you haven't driven down 82, you have noticed that they are working on that building diligently. They're still on track for opening in late May. They're working very hard and very fast. They want to get it open as soon as possible. I will also add that the Pizza Hut building has some interest in it. I spoke with the property owner today, and I should know something more substantive probably by next month, so they're, they're in the process of wrapping something up with a tenant for that building. And here again, we're in, we're in some tough times, but we're filling these buildings up, and it makes me very proud to know that we're desirable and they want to fill those buildings. Next is, we have a NOPEC grant for $29,000 for replacing lighting fixtures. We are fortunate to get that, and what we are going to utilize that for is we're taking the fixtures that we currently have at the city hall and the recreation center, and we are turning them to LED. and we are turning them to LEDs. For those of you who may not know, those LED bulbs save us a lot of money because they reduce the usage of electricity, and they'll be a lot more efficient and takes a lot less time when we have to replace bulbs because they're not needed to be replaced as often. So looking forward to that and more to come on that in the near future. If you've been to the park lately at Longwood, the shade structures have been erected. They are going to be moving very quickly. The service department's also in there now doing a drainage project, which I'm sure Mr. Notavang will touch on, but I'm glad to see that those structures are up. We're going to have concrete put in there as well, and we'll have bleachers on Field B. So another nice thing that we have coming our way, and very excited to see the progress with that. Next is the Golden Corral Building. I can tell you tonight that we have a proposal coming in from Panda Express. They are looking to come into that area. We're getting details here this week, and we'll know more probably by the next meeting, but they are interested in the building and they are pursuing it. So there's something new that we could have come to the community. I know a lot of people talk about wanting different types of things in the community, so Panda Express may be our next tenant at that building. And finally, today, I reached out to the schools a little over a year ago about, if you're traveling down Route 82 westbound, we have the railroad bridge. There's a big blank canvas that we have there for them to be. We want to do something with it unique, so I engaged the school. They're going to be proposing a mural to paint on there, and I actually have a meeting tomorrow with them for what that may look like, with the help of Mr. Gelati and the schools, and a lot of talks and conversations. We've come up with some kind of concepts that we're going to be working on and may be able to move very quickly with this, so we may see something there within the next several months that they're going to paint on there, so it's not just a blank concrete wall. We can put something on there. We were talking about, you know, the Nordonia Knights, the city seal, or things like that, so there's more to come on that as well. And last but not least, please don't drive distracted, put down the phones, and drive the vehicle. All right, next on our list is the committee reports.
Well, I'll speak for the Future Growth Committee, which last met in 2015, but that was one of our hopes for the city, is to get a mural painted on one of those large walls on 82. So that's really great to hear. That's the end of my report for the Future Growth Committee. For the Parks and Rec Committee, our next meeting is next Wednesday at 6:00 PM, and you can find the link online if you'd like to join us.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll move into department reports. Just so everyone's aware, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Collins are not present tonight. They have been excused for personal reasons. So I will start with Mr. Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to cover a couple of things with everyone today. Thank you, first of all, council, for passing our opportunity to go for a bid for the parking lot project. Everybody knows we desperately need this parking lot repaved, and it'll hopefully come in in wonderful timing to get us prepared to run summer events throughout the course of the summer, starting the first weekend in June. I wanted to announce to everyone, our participation numbers are continuing to grow on a weekly basis. As the COVID numbers continue to decline, our participation is increasing. It's a good sign for us. Our February numbers are beyond what our January numbers are. So beautiful to see as we continue to go through 2021. Friday, March 19th, we will host an egg hunt in Longwood Park on the baseball fields and in the open field area. The event, actually, most of the age groups sold out already, and then we opened up some additional space which will allow for more people to come in. We are asking for pre-registration to be done, so that way we can monitor how many people are coming in and participating, so we can keep safety protocols in place. We are currently working on an event for Saturday, April 24th, to highlight Earth Day, cumulatively bringing together some opportunities for activities and a park and open area cleanup. More details to come on that. I wanted to be able to pass on, April swim lessons, as well as April swim clinics, and diving are available for registration. We have a number of kids participating in these programs already. We want to continue to grow that within the community. Our soccer programs, serving kindergarten to sixth grade, are currently open for registration, which closes on March 19th. And our esports tournaments are currently being advertised for the month of March. There is a host of different tournaments to participate in, as well as esports leagues that will start in April. So please be sure to check out our social media and our website for more information on each of the different games that are available. We have a lifeguard training course that will be offered April 5th through 8th. That's an opportunity for people 15 and over to be able to participate in a lifeguard training class. It's provided, and I can say that we will also be looking to hire a couple lifeguards, so there may be some opportunities there, whether with us or other local entities as well. Lastly, we have current activities, dodgeball, Challenge Island, swim lessons, manorays, swim team, diving, and a host of fitness classes currently running within the recreation center. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Can you elaborate a little bit on esports for those that may not be familiar with what that is, please?
Sure, I would love to. Esports is essentially taking various platforms, such as Xbox, PS4, and obviously, you know, new PS5s coming out, and it takes these game console systems and plugs you into an online gaming experience, which can be very dangerous when you go online. One of the things we've worked on with other entities is you pull together to have an esports league or an esports tournament. That way you have a host. And within this host, everybody is going through the same group, and for us, it's called GG Leagues. That is our host, and we are able to then provide a safe environment for people to participate in online play. So you get on and actually play video games, same as you would online versus other people. And in the tournament style, obviously, it's a single or double elimination tournament. And when you do leagues, it's an every-week tune-in, play the games, and every-week record accumulates about that game, and then you move on to an end-of-the-season tournament.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Gelati.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you to council for passage of resolution 17 here tonight, so we'll get that process started right away. And with regards to the road program for this season, the public bid opening for the road program contract has now been scheduled for March 26th. So if all goes well, we will have a contractor recommendation for the council in April. End of report.
Thank you. Chief Golden.
Thank you, Mayor. Some folks may not be aware, but last week, we had a bank robbery. I'm proud to say that after some hard work, within four days, the suspect was identified, and a warrant was issued. And this past Saturday, he was picked up trying to cross the border into Canada. So we are working with the law department, the prosecutor, and the folks in New York to try to bring him back here to face those charges. That's all I have there.
Thank you, and kudos to your department for identifying that so quickly and working to apprehend him, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Notavang.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor previously mentioned, the shade structures are up at the park. The storm sewer installation taking place is going between the four baseball fields, and these are within the three grass-lined areas. Between A and B is already completed, and now they're moving on to C and D, which is the furthest south location. This is much needed to be done here, because with the bleachers going in, we're going to have concrete pads and concrete walkways from Field B on each side of the field, leading to the score tower. So this is definitely needed to do to contain that water, any type of groundwater that we get, so we can get it out of the park. And then from there, we are going to end up continuing down the driveway toward the parking lot to redo the piping in there, because it's older piping collapsing on itself, and then take it all the way out to the parking lot to the swale. On that, in our service department, we are still conducting our night shift. You know, we have some nice weather right now, but it is Ohio. Doesn't mean winter's over. We were always good for a couple hits here and there, but still utilizing them at nighttime. It allows us to clean Highland Road Bridge safely with hardly any traffic out there to get the debris off the walkways and the curb areas, and also allows to mark out all of the streetlights that are out. I am happy to say our electrician is back with us, and he has a long list of streetlights that he has already started to repair. And that is the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Good evening, everyone. We're still working on the same projects we were at the last council meeting, unfortunately. 800 radio system. Surprised Mr. Garvis hasn't called me for his personal update, being it is his hobby.
It's been a couple of weeks.
We are still working on it. We want to make sure we get it right. Right now, the code plugs, as they call it, are held up in Coggin County for interoperability, but that gets technical, and Jeff understands it better than I do. Other than that, like I said, ongoing projects, and I would like to personally comment on how presentable I feel Veterans Memorial Park is. I think it's become a gem. And I just think they've done it phenomenal work, and kudos to them, and keep up the good work. End of my report.
Thank you.
Chief, daylight savings time.
Yes, I'm sorry, and again, that's what I get for being out of town.
It seems like I was just reminding you about that. Time is flying, huh?
Oh, boy, yes, it is. Our parents warned us of that. But as you're aware, spring ahead, so this Saturday night at 2 o'clock, it becomes 3 o'clock. That also is your prompt to change your batteries in your smoke detectors, and if you have them in your CO detectors, it's also just a good opportunity along with our bunch of week in October to practice your fire safety drills and things of that nature with your young children, so that we don't have any tragedies in our city. Thank you, Jessica. You know, I'm always hiring if you're interested, just saying.
Thanks, Chief. All right, Mr. Verris.
Thank you, Mayor. With tax season upon us, I want to remind the residents that the 2020 City of Macedonia Tax Refund Packet is online, and click on the Finance Department page, and you'll find a link to the papers that you need to fill out to file. The due date is July 15th. Unless you have a Rita extension, we will extend for the same period of time that your Rita extension is for. Happy to report that we've started training on the finance software package. It's going very well, and we look forward to continuing that. And then, once the finance team is trained, we will begin training other departments with them kind of looking over our shoulders. So, end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Godetti.
I have no report this evening, sir.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Hearing none, any new business?
It's always normal. Every meeting, we recognize someone at the high school who's moving on, and this gentleman was a great football player, and now he's going to the state finals. I know I can't say his name correctly, but Sal Purini is, I mean, it's awesome. He got great publicity in the Akron Beacon Journal, and so we wish him well. I'd also still like to say thanks for the bowling team that went there. They didn't get far, but they had someone who bowled over 600 series, and if you bowl, that's tough to do. So I want to recognize them, and then you also would have seen in the news leader about the team that was going, the debate team, I believe, was going forth. There's a lot of great academics, as well as athletics going on at the high school, and I appreciate the publicity that they're all getting, so that the public can also recognize what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to give some recognition to our zoning inspector, Mr. Chris Hall. Every time I message him and ask him for something on behalf of a resident, he is right there, taking care of it. I get kudos for the work that he has done, and I make sure I let people know that it's Chris behind the scenes. He's not at these meetings, so I'm not sure how many people know, how many residents know, but our zoning inspector, Chris Hall, is really on the ball, and I appreciate him. So I just wanted to, you know, get his name out there during one of our meetings.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Mr. Mayor, real quick, I do believe Nordonia had a total of three wrestlers qualified for the state tournament. So all three, you know, good luck in Columbus.
Thank you. Any other new business? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Have a nice evening.
Good night.
Good night.